It's okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Select Board meeting tonight. We're going to have a joint meeting with the Planning Board to start, but it's Tuesday, September 16th, and I want to make a clear announcement that this meeting is being audio and video recorded. And let's stand for the platter.
My intentions to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I guess we'll start out with an announcement that attention to bus riders, the WRTA is asking for a survey to help guide its fixed route services. Log on to the town's website, brookfieldma.us to find the survey link under the announcements. Ron, you want to do?
Yep. We've got two warrants before us this evening. First one is fiscal year 2026-06. It's an accounts payable warrant in the amount of $199,105.27, and the other is a payroll warrant, fiscal year 2026-06, in the amount of $225,035.71.
Okay. To the planning board, do you guys want to open your meeting?
Sure, absolutely. Okay, it is...
Let me do this. It is six minutes after, well, five minutes after seven by the Apple clock. I'm calling this meeting of the Brookfield Planning Board to order on September 16, 2025. And we are also doing a separate audio recording for the facilitation of creating minutes. So I'm just going to have each member of the Planning Board state their names so they'll be recognizable on the recording. I'm Kevin Erkola.
Chris Gorman.
Steve Carmen.
Lisa Matandi.
Great, thank you. Okay, the first item, and the only item really, on our agenda for tonight is the joint meeting with Brookfield Select Board, for which we've come together to elect a member to fill an open Planning Board position that was vacated by the untimely death of Mr. King back in June. I'm going to just call, if I may, for any candidates who might be nominated. We have one candidate from the Select, from the Planning Board, rather, that is nominated for the position. Her name is Jennifer Santucci, and she lives here in Brookfield, Massachusetts. And I'll entertain a nomination of Jennifer, one of those present. Steve?
Yes, I'll make that nomination for Jennifer Santucci.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Chris seconds. Okay. Any other nominations? If not, motion to close nominations at this time? Anybody?
I'll make a motion to close nominations.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right. All in favor of closing nominations, please signify by saying your name and aye.
Steve, aye.
Lisa, aye.
Chris, aye.
And Kevin, aye. And so we have one candidate. The Mass General of Law requires us to have a roll call vote of all those members of the two boards present and voting. So I'll ask each of the members of the Planning Board to state their name and aye if they are in favor of the election of Ms. Santucci.
Steve, aye.
Lisa, aye.
Chris, aye.
And Kevin, aye.
I'll make a, do we need a separate motion?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Beth Kaufman, aye.
And Richard Chafee, aye. Is Ms. Santucci here this evening?
Yes.
I want to thank you very much for stepping up and helping out, and I really appreciate that.
Happy to do so.
Yeah, good.
Thanks. We have gifts for you.
There's a door prize.
Okay, let it be recorded that the election of Ms. Santucci was unanimous for the six members of the two boards present and voting. That is all that the Planning Board has on their agenda for tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at, let me check the time, 7:09 PM.
Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying your name and aye.
Steve, aye.
Lisa, aye.
Chris, aye.
And Kevin, aye. The Planning Board stands adjourned at 7:09. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again. All right. I'd like to make one more announcement. It's my understanding that Chief Blanchard's mom passed, and I'd like to know, Karen, would you put the pad and send our condolences?
Yes, absolutely.
Yeah, please.
All right, number two, Communications Committee appointment. I'll entertain a motion to appoint Megan Crane.
You have that motion?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number three, Treasurer Position Discussion slash Vote. I'd like to hear from Ron to start, and then could you just bring us up the board and the public up the board with what you've done and how we've debated with this?
Sure. Well, as you recall, a few meetings ago, we did have an interview with William Schlossstein, as well as with Ben Gelb. Subsequent to that, myself and the current treasurer, Sharon Ashley, interviewed another candidate, Rebecca Ferrant, and the, I guess, the takeaways, for lack of a better term, with Ms. Ferrant.
Can you pull the ones for Ms. Santucci? So I just want to let you know the process going forward, that Sarah Campbell Art Clark will be in to sign this, but you'll need to be sworn in at the Clark's office before you do any more.
Right.
Okay, awesome, thank you. Sorry.
As a chair, you can sign four in your name.
Okay, well, Mike's not here, so.
So as I said, Sharon Ashley, the current treasurer, and myself interviewed Ms. Ferrant, and from a Treasury perspective, she nailed everything. She's got prior experience, she's very well... Question that Sharon had, she knew the answer to, and she had experience in that. So from a Treasury standpoint, home run, checks all the boxes. However, Ms. Ferrant is looking for the, what I'll refer to as the combined Treasurer/HR position. Unfortunately, Ms. Ferrant does not have any HR experience. Even in her current position, she has no exposure to HR. She's never been through a payroll cycle. She does not have Vadar experience, which is something of, you know, at least a little bit of a concern. Also, another concern was with regards to her hours. Her current, or her suggested hours of availability would be all day on Friday, and then on Wednesday, Wednesday evening. And in speaking with the town accountant, payroll is obviously done on Thursdays. And one of the concerns, the significant concern, which I think is, certainly has merit, is even if Ms. Ferrant were able to complete her portion of the payroll on Friday, if there's any discrepancy between the two, now, instead of being literally side by side, comparing notes, trying to figure out where that issue might be, now they're going to be remote. And trying to figure it out remotely could certainly be a challenge, to say the least. So certainly a concern with regards to that. With that being said, in discussions, subsequent discussions with Ms. Ashley, she had indicated that she is willing to stay on at performing the Treasury roles. Certainly, she's been very affront. She is looking to offload the HR portion as soon as possible, but she said if we can hire an HR person sooner versus later, she would stay on for, you know, at least a foreseeable future, performing the Treasury functions. So that's pretty much where we stand with the three candidates and the current treasurer's situation.
Okay. I intended to have a conversation with Sharon today, but she was on vacation. So I guess one concern that I have is if we get down the road three months where she's already resigned once, is she going to be looking to resign again, right? I don't know that her heart's totally in it. So I would like to have another conversation with Sharon to figure out if she's willing to take it on long-term, and if she's not, then we come up with a temporary solution and move forward, but then we also keep the advertisement out there so we try to attract... Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Well, no, I was interrupting. That's why I, like, started and then stopped.
No, go ahead, I'm pretty well done.
So I have a thought regarding this, okay? And I hear what you're saying regarding that we could wind up in a, in the situation down the line. One of the things that dawned on me, and I know in, in speaking through a bunch of stuff with Ron, like, we kind of game plan some of our options relative to the HR portion of the Treasury role, okay? And I hear that you haven't had time to have that conversation with Sharon yet, and I respect that you want to have that knee-to-knee conversation, but here's one of my thoughts. One of the options we have for this is a person who's currently doing an internship, who, I hate to put it this way, is used to being temporary help, right? When you're in an intern role, fundamentally speaking, you're not expecting that role to last forever, okay? Yet it also is a position, and I have some, I have at least one intern in my day job, where they get the opportunity to learn, get exposed to a bunch of other things and what have you, okay? I think we could still talk about tonight potentially hiring the HR person, in particular if we pursued the person who's interning at Belcher Town, okay? And maybe that initial offer for the HR stuff is like, hey, you're going to do this, you know, let's just plan that this is going to be through May of next year, right? Let's call it a co-op position, okay? Even though the position itself, and now we run into an issue, it has to be seasonal, right? Because we don't actually have an H, we don't actually have an HR role on the books.
That's correct.
So whoever we hired, if we're going to hire to just do the HR stuff, it has to be a seasonal role anyway, which has certain definitions of how long it can be and how many hours it can be, okay? So we could hypothetically tonight hire a seasonal HR person that has some passion around that particular work and have that conversation with Sharon with the understanding that we had somebody, at least from a temporary perspective, a seasonal perspective, in that HR role, so that she's making the decision based on a known work condition, instead of, instead of hunting down the road a bit, figuring out if we're going to bring somebody in, because the longer she's doing the HR stuff, the less likely she would be, I think, to continue her service with us, right? And we've had nothing but a positive experience, I think, from the standpoint of her work on the Treasury work. It's just, right now, you know, too much. And we've had that complaint before from our treasurers, that Sharon is not the first person to have to deal with the HR stuff and have, be pulling their hair out, right? So insanity, the definition of insanity, at least from the '80s, is to do the same thing over and over again, expect a different result, right? So we have an opportunity tonight to do something different, change the work condition in potentially a positive way, but in a way that we're not, I hate to put it this way, it's not one that we're wedded to forever necessarily. It's a construct we can test out with the seasonal role. We're going to be talking later tonight about doing a special town meeting. We could put the job description on the special town meeting, right? Give ourselves the option to be able to use that construct going forward, right? And basically test drive how that construct works, and still, and we can still keep the Treasurer position out there posted. I have no objection to leaving it out there posted. I just would like to resolve one of the two issues tonight, personally. And that would be my recommendation of how to go forward, is to make it a seasonal role, hire the truly seasonal person, right, for the seasonal role, see how it works out, get a real feel for how it can go, and then, and then take a look at that construct going forward.
I think some of the concern that I'm thinking, as Sharon said that she would like to reduce it to one day a week in person here, and in doing so, the individual that you hired, I mean, that you interviewed, is she still in college, the one that worked? She still?
For the HR person? Yes, there's, there's two candidates for the HR. One is in her last year of college. The other is a, I believe she's available immediately. She's got 20-plus years of experience in the private sector, not necessarily in HR, but more in administrative clerical, but certainly a lot of business experience. The other candidate, yes, she interned for approximately three months or so with Belcher Town this past summer. She's in her last year as a HR major, and once again, her availability is pretty solid.
Yeah, you said it's pretty solid, because, I mean, usually they assume you're in college, they have all kinds of availability during the day, right? Either, either early morning, because they have afternoon classes, or vice versa.
Yes.
So the fact that Sharon would be here one day a week, and this individual would have, I'm guessing, two days a week, is that, how many hours do we have set for the...
Yes, with regards to Cara Mariachi, she's the candidate that has a private sector experience, basically she had availability almost unlimited.
Okay.
However, with the other candidate, she was looking at Monday and Wednesday, four hours and four hours, anytime on Monday, so we're thinking maybe more morning through maybe lunchtime, early afternoon, and then Wednesday, starting at 12 and covering the afternoon hours.
Yeah, like 10 to 2 and 12 to 4, or something like that.
Exactly, because obviously we want to accommodate the teachers. Teachers generally aren't truly available until 3 o'clock or so.
And which day did Sharon want to work? Because it seems to me that it would be important that the individual worked with Sharon directly as well.
At least to me, Sharon hadn't indicated. I don't know if she had talked to you, Lori.
No, yeah, I know what you have to say. I was getting to you.
So I did get a chance to talk to Sharon about all of this before she left her vacation. Her goal of switching to one day a week was to mirror my schedule of one day a week, because we work together. The thought process on that was that she really doesn't have to work in the office with the HR person.
Yeah.
Giving the HR was giving the HR away. I mean, obviously, there'd be some training and some transitioning, but it would be that person is doing HR. And the majority of the HR stuff could actually be done remote, and you'd just be meeting with people as needed. So the HR could actually be 90% remote and as requested appointments. All of our onboarding now for HR is done online, so the teachers don't have to come in anymore with their stacks of paper. We send them an email with a link to the employee forward after the school just provides us their name and their social security number, and then they get a link to fill out all their papers. The only time we're meeting with people in the office is when they have an issue, and 90% of the time, they are setting up appointments with Sharon ahead of time. So she doesn't need to be with this person at all after they train.
Okay.
So she would be looking at the Tuesday, the alternating Tuesday, Thursday that I do.
To match you.
Yes.
And she's okay with training?
Yes.
How are you with this?
I'm fine with it.
Okay.
You know, Sharon said if, you know, and I don't want to fully speak for her, because she is not here, but we did have a conversation, and she said as long as the HR...
Works out.
Works out, she is fine with staying. And I do believe that. I've worked with her for 10 years in multiple different roles in different towns, and, you know, I know she wouldn't ever leave us in a lurch. She's never left any town in a lurch.
Which is why we're still having this conversation right now.
Exactly.
Well beyond her origination date originally.
Yeah, and I mean, in regards to the other three candidates, there wasn't one that actually stuck out that would have been a good fit.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Sorry, do you have any?
No, not yet.
So how many hours a week did we come up with when you did the advertisement for the HR person?
HR would be 10, 10 hours per week.
So that's in keeping with the two days factor?
Correct.
I gave, we didn't do a motion, so can I give a motion to, what's, what's her, what's AJ's last name?
AJ Terry.
Terry.
And AJ is in fact here this evening.
Oh, hello. I'm sorry, I've been talking about you in a third person.
I'm sorry.
Okay, right. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint AJ Terry as a seasonal HR administrative assistant.
I'll second that.
Or actually, let's call it a clerk. Can I amend my appointment to clerk?
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
Well, thank you, AJ, for applying, and congratulations.
Yep, I'm glad to have you, quite frankly, so.
I'll reach out to you tomorrow.
And I have all kinds of ideas. Watch out, and get them from Ron, because I had all kinds of ideas this afternoon.
I'll get her oriented first.
Yeah.
Then we'll feed her to the wolves.
All right, so number five, the cemetery pavement project. I am going to recuse myself, as my son may be doing some work there, selling the asphalt grindings to the town, so, Beth, it's all yours.
Okay, great. So I had conversations with Mr. Eaton, I had conversations with the highway superintendent, stood in on a meeting with the contractor, and one of the concerns that we have is that fundamentally, we got kind of a late start on this particular project, and the earliest commitment we could get from the chip seal vendor was, like, October. Really, for the results to be best for that particular project, we need to do the millings when it's hot, and it might have been almost hot enough this last week, which was when we were planning on doing it, but it was right on the boundary, right? And then, even though the chip seal vendor was saying, no, it's fine to do it when it's cooling off, that hasn't been my experience, or based on my research, and when I talked to Kyle and Scott about it, they were like, yeah, it's kind of, it's really kind of iffy. This is one of those situations where, as much as we've been, it's taken us two years to get here, I think we'll be, we'll be better serving the town by taking this project and moving it to the next construction season, when we're, when we're more likely to be able to, now that we've got the plan, we've got the materials, we know exactly what we want to do, we're better off going ahead and punting this to the spring season, or even the beginning of summer, when we start getting enough heat to do the millings properly. I did talk to Kyle in the midst of this and say, hey, the one commitment I do want from you all is in exchange for kind of taking the big project off of their plate for this fall, that we at least go through and put, lay down some, like, gravel or material on some of the worst of the worst, like, potholes, basically do like a pothole fill and leveling on some of the worst of the worst in there, so that people's access between now and when we do the main project is sufficient to at least not, you know, put vehicles at hazard that are going down some of the worst of the worst roads there, right? There's some areas where they could put down some, some other material for right now that would, would keep people safe, right, and make those roads passable. And it just feels like the right thing to do relative to the durability and the, the quality of the outcome on the project. So I actually asked them to cease work until we could talk about it today, even though it was scheduled to happen tomorrow and Thursday, the first part of it with the, the millings and stuff, but they hadn't gotten to the vegetation portion, so I, we called off the vendor for that, and, and I wanted to talk about it as a, as a board before we went ahead with it, because it just doesn't make sense from a, I want to call it, technical perspective of executing network, especially with all the other major projects that Highway is doing right now, between Gay Road, 148. I honestly feel like that, that one added on top is like the strata break the camel's back right now. The Highway Department's doing such a great job, I don't want to put them in that position, basically, so. So I'd like just to make it official, could I, could I get a motion to go ahead and defer that project to the, the next construction season?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Absolutely. I know we already voted it, but please.
As a past member of this paving committee, we've been decommissioned, but we've been keeping close contact with Kyle and the project manager, Scott. And I just want to say publicly, if they feel strongly that they want to do it, I respect that decision. Maybe we could get by with squeezing it in, but if this road is going to be there for a lasting period, we ought to do it damn right.
Exactly.
Pardon my English, but we ought to do it right. What we should be aware of, we'll probably have to go through the bidding process again.
We will.
We now have disbanded the Cemetery Paving Committee, so that burden will rest with Kyle to go...
Or the procurement officer, actually.
So it's done?
Yeah.
Okay, so as long as I know that the ball's not going to be dropped.
You're off the hook.
Okay, good.
All right, special town meeting discussion. Ron?
Yes.
Here, what you come up with.
Yes, we have at least informally talked about the possibility of a special town meeting coming this fall, and I think we've reached a point where it's pretty much mandatory at this point. We have several different items that would have to be addressed, things such as the health insurance premium deficit. We have free cash, the disposition of how we want to handle free cash, obviously.
Well, I mean, technically, that could wait to the annual.
That could, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, historically speaking, we've, we've waited till the, till the annual to do anything with, with the certified free cash. So while we can make some decisions, and, and it may be appropriate to do so, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but...
No, go ahead.
I don't want to, I don't want to give anybody in the audience the, the impression that we have to do anything about free cash until, you know, the May-June timeframe, when we typically do our annual.
Yeah, categorized probably more as a nice-to-have, to be able to potentially move things around during the, during the fall special. But the other things is the elementary school roof project, the school committee, I am not sure if they've actually had a chance to formally discuss the amount of funding they're going to dedicate towards that, but currently, right now, we have approximately $850,000 in the stabilization fund for that roofing project, and with additions from the schools that may put us into the category where we would have enough funding to actually go out and start bidding on that particular project, because we would have at least enough cash available, so Lori won't jump on us saying that the funding isn't available, we can't, we can't.
But also, and aren't we technically already all right, because there were two quotes, one of them was only like 600K and one of them was a million?
I think so.
There was, in that report, there was two quotes.
Yeah.
One of them was like 670,000 or something like that, and the other one was like, was like closer to, like, right shy of a million, right? So hypothetically, we could have gone, we could go out to quote "as is right now."
Right.
Right, because the school did, their initial commitment was like two hundred and fifty thousand, so we have.
Right.
Enough.
Right, so.
Yeah, I remember that, option one covered a portion of it, I think, and then option two covered a bigger portion and replaced, I think, maybe a, a part, yeah, that was a concern like later on or in the future, I think it was.
Yeah, so, I mean, I mean hypothetically speaking, we could, we could go out with the expectation that, that we would have it, and if we didn't, then it would be close enough so long as we, because like one of the things we could do is we could go back out, we could, we could, if we select a date today for the special town meeting, most of those quotes are good for sixty to ninety days, right, we could put out an RFP based on the eight hundred and fifty K that we have, that's midway of the two quotes that were included in that report, go out, get the RFP, have some real numbers through the special town meeting, relative to, you know, we just put it on as an article to, we could put it on as an article, right?
Yeah, so when we go out to bid, yeah, for the RFP, could we go with option one, smaller amount, and then do an alternate bid? And do the sec, second option, and, yeah, and do the one point, whatever it was.
Absolutely, yep.
To get out the RFP.
Yeah, and then, and then fundamentally, then we would have a, a real and solid number to present to the town meeting, right?
And even now, if you, I mean, you're still talking a couple of weeks even before you got the RFP together and stuff, so.
Yeah, but if we have, you know, if we have eight hundred and fifty in the bank and we already had two, two quotes granted their age, so it's appropriate for us to go out and get more bids, and then that way we can, we could have that article without a number in it, right, and then we can set the number based off of the final negotiations with the school board and, or the region and, and, uh, what we get back on the quotes.
And, and to further firm up those numbers, Wales is going through a very similar project right now, and we're trying to see if the contractor can take a look at our roof situation and have him ballpark it to, like I said, in essence, to kind of confirm what some of those earlier quotes were, so that would even firm up those numbers that much more.
Yep.
So, that's, so I clearly think we've kind of hit critical mass where it probably makes sense to, in fact, call a special town meeting, and in doing some preliminary calls and, and work, I did touch base with the town moderator, touch base with the schools, and touch base with, with Jacob and Lori, and it looks like that last week of October is kind of a sweet spot where everything kind of comes together, the one caveat being Dr. Hostman had indicated that October twenty ninth, the cafeteria was not available, but if we want to stick with the Thursday, which is what we've been kind of, at least since I started, we've been consistent with Thursday night town meetings, that would be October thirtieth, I believe.
So, in some of the emails I saw that it would be possible for after the first week in November, so possibly the second week in November?
That starts to get really hairy.
Yeah, that's, I think we're going to lose a town moderator after the first few days of November, I think it's November seventh or so.
Lori shaking her head no.
Yeah, Lori, Lori's got some issues with going too far.
It, with setting the tax rate, that turns into an absolute goat rodeo, is that a safer video phrase?
Yes, and we just got to slap on the wrist for what happened last year, so, um, we can't do that again.
Because there were some other phrases that came to mind, but I don't know if I want them in more memorialized.
So what's the date in October, you think, Ron?
Uh, if we want to stick with Thursday and be consistent with some previous town meetings, that would be October thirtieth, I believe.
Okay. I'm good with that? And Bill Gilmoister was, that was one of the ones he was good with?
Yep, that's, he's available that week, Jacob's available that week, that day is available for BES, so like I said, everything seems to kind of coalesce and Lori won't get, uh, she won't get angry and threaten me with violence because she doesn't want to go before D O, D O R again.
I hear you.
So I'll entertain a motion to set the special town meeting for October thirty.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
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 So we should have included the time, I guess, so.
All right, so, uh, make a motion that we do set the time for seven P.M.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right, number seven, global positioning policy slash discussion. So I did get the draft emailed to me this week, yesterday, but I wasn't really good with that policy myself, I would like to see, you reach out, Ron, and see if we can get some more policies on this.
Sure.
What's, uh, what's your thought, Beth and Sarah?
It's good start, I, I, I read it a little bit last week, um.
So I think, first, first of all, the one thing I don't want to do is make any type of, I'm sorry, where do you finish?
No, um, yes, sorry, go.
Okay, um, I'm not ready to have, I, I did get a chance to review it, though I was reviewing it on my phone this afternoon, so.
Okay.
I, I think we need to get this out to the department heads, I think we need to have some focused meetings about, like, I didn't care for some of the language in here, quite frankly, because I think, I think it's just going to be, it's going to make things worse, not better, right, because it, it certainly implies that the predominant reason to do this has to do with, with, um, being big brother, right?
Yeah, or discipline, or like, yeah, and that wasn't.
And the only reason why I voted for this in the first place was that it was supposed to be something that was more akin to a tool, in particular for the highway department, to be able to do planning and, and ensuring that they, um, are having the most effective operations possible under the control and supervision of the highway super, and not necessarily like as a stick, right, and this is very much a stick policy, right?
This policy is, and that's why I said I was, I did not care for this at all.
So, um, yeah, so, yeah, so I think we need to, to start from the ground up about having, having a real dialogue about what's the purpose, what's the intent, and how it's going to be used, what's going to be available to whom and when, and this doesn't really address hardly any of those questions.
Well, in fact, one of the things that, I think I speak for all the department heads, is they want the, they want to make sure that the data is secure and it's not just wide open.
Right.
They do realize that it's not available for, for public records requests, things along those lines.
Right.
But they also want to make sure that, you know, not any town employee can get a portal login and just start checking around, so I think one of the things that certainly behooves us is, in the policy itself, indicate the access and protections, the nice thing is the portal has the ability to be very granular in its security, so I think that's something we should take advantage of.
A lot of, a lot of user, uh, like profiles that can be used.
Exactly.
Yeah, so. Do you have feelers out with other towns regarding your policies? I know you said Sturbridge doesn't have one.
Yeah, Sturbridge does not, um, Officer Murphy is trying to get a hold of the state police GPS, uh, policy.
Okay.
So hopefully we can, we can get that, um.
Have you asked ChatGPT yet?
Yeah, no, I did, I have not gone the A.I. route, not yet, um, but I also did reach out, uh, in fact, just today to, to Belcher Town, because they've had GPSs for at least a few years now.
Yeah, okay.
So, I, I will, I will hunt and beat the bushes to see what other policies we can get.
All right, sounds good.
I'm going to see if I can write one with my buddy ChatGPT and bring one in the next time we have this on the agenda.
You can do, tell it to do anything, it will do it.
You can, you have to be very explicit in the instructions, though, so, I had one document that I, I think, I think I was on my fifth version before I was satisfied with.
All right, number eight, council on aging resignation from Patty King, uh, we'll accept that with, with regret, and I know she's going through a lot, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number nine, Sarah Campbell, her resignation from the Cable Advisory Committee as well as the Conservation Committee, so, why, Sarah? No, I'm kidding, all right.
I have time.
Number, number ten, Cable, Cable Advisory Committee appointment, Jacob Gorbe, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll second it for discussion. Oh goodness, that law is going on, so Jacob is absolutely willing to serve, and we can vote him on today, but we ask an awful lot of Jacob, and, and I, I almost felt like asking him to perform that in like a voluntary, um, role wasn't really fair, and if, because my name wasn't on the agenda, we don't want to vote it tonight, and we need to put it off, um, but I was going to offer to fulfill that role, so, or we could vote him on tonight, and if he decides that he doesn't have the time, let, let you know that I can backfill for him.
I'll interrupt, we're, we're done, we already went through, but we are waiting to hear back from Charter on an answer, um, so we're just thinking that they're going to need to meet once, once or twice.
Which is why I was willing to volunteer, if it was going to be a long-term commitment, I was not doing it, I'm just being straightforward.
That's clever.
But I was willing to throw myself on a one or two meeting grenade, but if it was a ten or twelve meeting grenade, it was not happening.
What do you?
So. Sure.
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 So. Just so you can hear yourself later, so.
Um, yeah, so I mean, I'm, I'm happy to do it, um, but if you would like to do it instead, that's, that's more than okay, um, I am already on as ex officio, so I have to be there anyway, so.
Okay, so you have to be there anyway?
Yeah.
Okay, never mind then.
He's got all the meetings due, so.
Never mind, that's fine.
And, and under, under the charge, they have no purview over peg specifically, so, there's no, yeah.
All right, so we're covered, because that was my one concern.
Yeah, there's, there's no conflict of interest there.
And I didn't want anybody to like get stupid in the, in the Eves, because we have a lot of opportunity for that.
Yep, and the state says that people from outside of the town can be on it as well, so.
Okay, well then, we have.
Like I said, it should only be about two meetings.
All in favor?
Aye, that's it, that was easy.
Congrats, Jake, you won. We have resignations for the town hall improvement, Al Jones, Bill Simpson, and Kathy LaRocker. Beth, number twelve, the lithium, lithium ion battery storage, you know, Kim, you wanted that on agenda?
I did, so we, we had a, um, although I, I had wanted to talk just a little bit about the town hall improvement committee resignations, which is that, um, I'm hoping we take away from that the learning that we need to try to do a little more, if we're going to shift priorities of the committee, that we are the ones responsible for appointing, I would hope that we try to engage in some more proactive dialogue upfront and try to make it a bit more of a negotiation rather than, one, to make sure that we, we're aligned as a board before we start shifting priorities, and that we also, like, have it as a conversation, in a public conversation about, you know, how we do that refocus, right, I think it's really hard to get good volunteers in this town, we've had a huge amount of work get executed in this town hall by the folks that are, um, that resigned, okay, we have office space that we previously didn't have, that is certainly, I mean, people don't remember when we had people all stuffed into just that space over there, right, it's, it's, it's still not great, it's still not perfect, I'm not trying to say that, 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 that we're there, but a lot of the work that has occurred in this building has occurred incrementally, the, the way the town asked us to do it ten years ago, okay, one of the first things that I sat in on an advisory committee years ago was when we tried to do the C.P.A. and voluntarily taxed ourselves to do some big, like, construction and refurbishment efforts on, mostly focused on this town hall, and the town said, no, we want to budget a little bit at a time and just take care of it and pay as we go, okay, and the folks that resigned over the last six to eight weeks are the people who have been predominantly responsible for executing the intent of the town for nearly a decade with that town hall improvement committee, okay, so I just want to make sure we understand the investment that these folks have made in their time and their efforts, sometimes doing the labor themselves instead of bringing in contractors, and stretching the town's dollars incredibly, okay, and I think they would have been a great force for getting some of the things done that are near and dear to, to some of our, our members' hearts if we just had the dialogue upfront and, and negotiated like what the priorities were and, and then just laid out kind of a vision for where we wanted to go, okay, I'm hoping that after everybody's had some time to, to cool down and maybe have some dialogues outside of the, the construct of the town, that maybe we can bring stuff back around and get an appropriate team put together to try to, to do that work going forward, but I do not want to let these just go as like a thirty second agenda item, so I do want to thank everybody for the work that they did, right, and, you know, I, I'm, I'm hoping we can try to set a tone going forward, that when we have volunteer committees that are trying to do good work, that we recognize that work appropriately, and that if there is a, if there is a disconnect between what the board's priorities are and what the committee's priorities are, that we can engage in a productive dialogue around that going forward.
So, so I'll accept some responsibility for driving my point forward in a very aggressive way, but I won't take full responsibility for the action of the town hall improvement committee, because we put new floors in here and they didn't consider the windows, they lost total, they lost total perspective of what the charge was and how it was supposed to be handled, if you read the charge, how it was supposed to be handled was an idea gets brought to the select board, it gets okayed, and then it goes forward, that's not what was happening, not at all. I sat here last winter visiting one office from the next and watched everyone in this building that was working freezing to death, sitting on electric heaters that, number one, are illegal, number two, they're extremely unsafe. That shouldn't have happened for as long as it was, we shouldn't have finished the second floor of this building with all that money that we got through COVID without taking the responsibility of hitting the windows, right?
So we, so, so just be careful about that.
No, let me speak, let me speak, so.
But, but let's stick a pin in that one about the COVID money and then keep going.
So, when that perspective was lost and that committee was just not reporting back to the select board, asking for permission to do those tasks, it totally got changed, so when I thought it was really important and made a point about the windows, no one liked it because it was my idea, but I'm going to tell you something, did you look at the last meeting of the town hall improvement committee, what their ambitions were, and I'm going to name it out, it was Al Jones, he came up with all the ambitions that he was going to do with the town, with the fourteen thousand dollars for the town hall improvement money, you couldn't have done it with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but that's the crap he put together so that he could then say, you know what, I quit, because Rich Chafee took the fourteen grand that we were going to spend throughout this building, because he wants to put it to the windows, but that's the crap that he did, so.
How many times have you gone to run down people for all the time and effort they've put into this now?
Hey, Holly, why don't you wait to be speak, do you want to speak, you can speak, but you're going to come up and you're going to speak. Come on up, Holly, you have something to say, if not, please be quiet, I'm going to call out everyone that's not doing their job.
They are all doing their job.
How many years did Al Jones sit in here and collect pay and do nothing but cause trouble in this building?
Are you kidding me?
We've not had an assessor for how long?
We're way, way out of agenda, gentlemen.
We've not had an assessor for how long, Holly?
This is not, let's.
We're way, we're way away.
We're way, we're way away from the agenda.
So Holly, you're out of line. So the fact of the matter is, he did that as a slam, is what he did, to basically charter a couple hundred thousand dollars of work that he was going to do when he knew there was 14,000, but he certainly knew that it was my opinion that that money should go towards the windows. And who in their right mind wouldn't put that money towards the windows rather than carpeting upstairs, carpeting downstairs? Like, it doesn't even make sense. So that's my point. So, but I will say, they did do good things for some of it. We have a beautiful handicap accessible, two beautiful handicap accessible bathrooms. They did do good things. But the minute I got involved and made, had criticism that the windows need to be done, that's when it all went to heck because it was personal, Beth. It wasn't about anything other than he didn't want to listen, he didn't want to take any advice from me or what I thought was important in this building. And the fact that people are sitting on heaters, any one of them could get their pants caught on fire while they're under, sitting on a heater. It's illegal, it's dangerous. That was my whole point. Come on up.
I'd like to take exception to most of what you said. The Town Hall Improvement Committee worked very closely with the Board of Selectmen. We never did anything that was not reviewed or approved. We had a budget and we managed that budget very well. You mentioned the flooring, the flooring was done as based on an approval from the Board of Selectmen and a recommendation. And as a matter of fact, you had modified the suggestion of this flooring by adding flooring in other offices of this building that were not included in our original scope of work. We did get prices as you requested and provided them, nothing happened. We did have prices for the windows, for certain windows in this building. We had quotes for those. When you mentioned the windows, the very first moment about your discussion on windows, I said, I'll work with you on that. We did get quotes. You could not do all the windows in this building for anywhere near the 14 or the 25 or the $200,000 that you're talking about. That's absolutely correct. And that kind of a project needs to be a capital improvement project of this entire building, not just windows, doors, insulation, heat, air conditioning, the kind of things that actually the Town Hall Improvement Committee had requested that the Board of Selectmen put some kind of a program and analysis together, never happened.
I want to just make that clear that that was not done while I was here.
It was done while you were here, but that's okay.
You'd have to give me the information to see, so I can see that because it was, that's not anything that I'm aware of. And I just want to make one more point. I know that these windows are going to be expensive and I got a couple quotes the other day. My point is that we do it slowly and we start in the offices. We're not going to, there's no way to do it other than that way.
You need to look at the big picture. The other thing I would like to say about the Town Hall Improvement Committee is they had a budget of $14,000. That money should be frozen because there's no committee, so nobody should be able to spend that. The other thing I would like to say is I would like to see the. Okay, great. Thank you for the time.
Mr. Eaton?
Talking as an outsider to all of this and quite frankly, it's disturbing how these meetings get out of hand. And I don't know if legally or whatever, I just wish the parties involved could talk outside of the public forum here and get their issues resolved and bring them to the public in a more civil way. I don't know if that means anything, but it was just disturbing for hearing people back and forth and I don't know. I don't know what more to say, but that's my thoughts. I wish there was another way to resolve these issues.
Anyone else want to speak to this?
I do.
Come on up.
Steve Carmen, I'd like to echo Kermit's statement there. I do feel like there is some spillover of personal animosity that impairs our ability to solve problems in town. And I think both parties are bringing problems forth. However, if there's a disagreement, it feels like things break down at that point. And it seems like things can't get resolved because we're hung up on who's on whose side or what's the agenda or who doesn't get along with whom. And I hear a little bit of that in some of these meetings. And I don't think this is necessarily the right forum to air grievances because that doesn't solve problems. I think there are some priorities in the Town Hall that should be addressed for sure, and I'm an outsider on this too. But we need to work with the people who are willing to work for the town because if we don't, then we don't have anybody to get the job done. And we further fall into a place where volunteers are discouraged from giving back to the town. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Beth, you want to go with your lithium battery?
Yeah, just the last thing is I do think we need to, at some point, look at the history of the votes on the COVID money because originally we had, I think earmarked $85,000 for the windows, if I remember correctly. And that was voted out of that and Two Gay Road for.
We voted it out and then we didn't designate it Two Gay Road, we designated it Two.
Roads, that's right. Or to, that's right, that's right. I knew there was, I knew there was something along those lines. So, so like before, you know, I just want to make sure we point out the fact the money was allocated for windows and then moved for various reasons that at the time, the full board, and I'm not going to, in any way, using that money from specifically the Town Hall windows to the roads.
There was also concern about being able to complete between bidding and completing the windows in the timeframe allotted to use the rest of the arc of Lent.
Money, right.
So we decided to go with all of it remaining to the roads.
So we didn't lose it.
So we didn't lose it. So I just, I just want to remind everybody that it wasn't that the project wasn't considered for COVID, it's that at the time, because of the lack of coordinated effort around it, we were concerned that the funding would expire prior to the execution of the project. So let's just make sure we don't think that we never considered that a legitimate project for that funding, just the logistics didn't wind up executing on a timeframe that would allow that particular funding to be used. Okay, I just want to make sure that that's clear.
Chris Gorman, Pine Lane, do we have an estimate on the cost per window or?
Mr. Chaffee says that he does.
I do have on the single sash windows for the officers, but it is in, it's with a double pane with vinyl, not, not the wood.
Wood.
But the next option that I'm looking at for some of the larger windows is just a simple, I don't know if it was Plexiglas or if it was Lexian, but just a simple sash that could be added and then removed and stored, so.
Did we ever get a quote before when we had the COVID money? No, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to number 12, the lithium battery storage in Oakham. All right.
Good evening, Dave Volcraft, 26 Allen Road, South Brookfield. You know, every time we get a committee here and they don't get their way, they quit. I've seen this happen time and time again in this town. Okay, you don't agree with the Selectmen, then you sit down, you have a meeting, all of you. You don't just say, oh, I quit because he didn't get, he didn't want to hear me. I've seen this happen with the highway boss, that's why he quit. He didn't get his little twice, so he quit. I see this happening all the time in this town. That's why we have committees to discuss, argue, fight, say this is better, your way's no good, mine's better, let's work something out, all right, we'll meet it halfway. This is good for the town, this is not good for the town. You don't, you don't get your way, you just quit. I see this happening all the time in this town. You don't agree, that's fine, that's why you get a committee, the finance board, I had nine people on the finance board and we all worked together and we all worked it out. And nobody just got up and quit because they didn't get their way. This, and this is what's happening in this town right now. Oh, I didn't get my way, I'm taking my toys and going home. So if you want to be on a committee, stay on the committee and stay tough. Work with the Selectmen, work with the committee, but don't go running home like a little baby. That's what the committee did on the Town Hall.
Jeff Clark, 101 Brunel Avenue. Just to sort of redirect things in a future, more positive fashion here, I would hope that the Select Board might put on the agenda for the next meeting or the next coming meetings, how do we find volunteers for the Building Improvement Committee or, you know, how do we go about it if everyone's quit and we have people want to freeze the funds? I think we need a Building Improvements Committee. And, you know, as my situation as chairman of the Advisory Committee, I know I tried a long time to get volunteers even for one spot, so I think might take the combined heads of the Select Board to try to figure out some way to reconstitute it in some shape or form. Because again, as everyone has said, you do need more than one or a couple people to move everything forward, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Jeff. All right. So battery energy storage facility that's proposed in Oakham. So a little bit of background, right? And folks, if there's anybody that typically supports renewable energy, it's me, but I also don't necessarily support stuff that doesn't make sense or that gets pushed through without any respect for home rule, right? So one of the unfortunate facts is that the state of Massachusetts has taken away a lot of the home rule options relative to energy storage facilities in communities within Massachusetts, okay? And there's also really no incentivizing of the cleaner and more efficient and more effective ways to store energy. There's a tendency to support projects that are really benefit the developer and not necessarily the community or the grid, right? So there is a proposal for a battery energy storage system in Oakham. They have asked surrounding communities to provide letters of support regarding that it shouldn't occur and that it's in an environmentally sensitive area and it really potentially like violates the character of their town, it violates the type of industry that they're looking to have in their town. And we don't necessarily have to vote it today, but I wanted to make sure that Ron provided everybody a copy of the materials so far that other towns have provided in support of Oakham fighting having this, right? They had attempted to get it in closer into the Boston area, that community successfully said no. Now Oakham is the next one in line. If, the thing we need to be aware of is that if it doesn't go into Oakham, they will probably look to other local rural communities and it could land here, right?
Yeah, we actually, I did not, but we as a planning board did approve.
Yeah, you were the only one that voted no.
I was the only one.
Not to interrupt you, yeah, but they voted yes, the town voted yes for one on 68 South Maple Street.
Correct.
That was in a wetland to, for 7,100 square feet.
Yep.
When did this go through?
2022.
It was, and we, I voted no again on the approval of the extension on the special permit. Because they didn't do any work in two years. It's still not.
Still out there and they still haven't started.
Yeah, but they still have approval.
Yeah, so they could right now.
So just so you're aware, we have it.
Sorry, not to interrupt you again, Chris, but yeah, my question and concern is if we approved one in our town, how are we going to tell Oakham that they shouldn't be doing one in their town?
Well, we're not telling Oakham no, we're, they're applying to the state to say no. And so, and first of all, the Brookfield Board of Selectmen is a separate entity from the planning board.
Yes, correct.
So.
I guess, but yes, but usually, you know, you follow suit with the rest of the town or that's what you're supposed to do.
So they're allowed in Brookfield by special permit?
Oh, yes, correct. Yep, and.
And actually, the challenge is, is if you really take a look at the state law right now, they may not have even needed that special permit to put the project in. Yeah, so that's, so the larger question is, so, and let's put it this way, like, we may have approved it as a planning board, right? I don't know the size of the facility, I don't know the type of the facility, right? It may be a different type of plant than this one, I'd have to go take a look at the plans and whatever information they provided to the planning board. I can tell you that this, this particular one is probably the worst of the worst relative to the, what you can put into place relative to the benefit versus the risk on the technology for what type of battery storage that they're using.
Ours was six cells, six separate units with no water on site. And the only fire hydrant is across Route 9. So that was a big no in my eyes.
Was water even.
Well, I don't think, I don't think water, so lithium, with lithium, I think with.
They still spray it and they still, so it doesn't spread and, you know.
So it'd be foam, more of a foam base?
They were not putting in a foam system either. They were not putting in a foam system. As a fire alarm licensed technician, I voted no strongly.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, yeah, I just wanted to, yep.
And we, and they did get their extension, correct?
Correct.
When is it good until?
Another year and a half. A year and a quarter almost.
All right.
They came earlier this year.
Come on, come on up, one.
So just some other quick information on this. Oakham actually is one of my other towns. My parents also live there. This is the second attempt at a battery storage facility in Oakham. They were able to fight off the first one a couple of years ago in a different location in town. This one, they're having less success fighting off. Apparently the contractor has also applied in Barry, so he is seeking multiple locations in case Oakham falls through. However, it is, they're seeking support from other towns because it is going to cost them a small fortune to fight this. However, because it's going to fall under what is considered for the greater good of the state, such as LNG facilities, battery storage facilities, it may get pushed through anyways, but due to the location with the DCR watershed and everything else, that's why they're hoping other towns will jump on board with, this is your water too.
Right, right. And this is instead, I know you said ours is like a six-cell thing, this is a 300-cell thing.
Yeah, this is a massive.
The one that you're talking about, if I remember correctly, is related to storage for some of the local solar.
Yes.
Facilities, right? And that's, so, and it's a, and it's a single substation. This is, this is, it's a new substation, but if I remember correctly, the size of the substation is something like 30 times bigger than the one that you're talking about. So it is a little different, right? And one of the challenges really, and I think this is, this is what's very frustrating about when they go for projects like this, is that when you have disseminated generation, what makes sense is disseminated storage. And this is an example of consolidated storage of disseminated generation, which makes absolutely no sense. It only makes sense from a developer perspective, it doesn't make sense from, you know, a technology safety or environmental perspective, right? make sense from, you know, a technology safety or environmental perspective, right? So, you know, like I said, if we don't have to act today, you know, I wanted to get the information in front of us. That way we can go, go away, think about it, come back, decide if we want to at least provide, draft a letter of support for Oakham since, since, and like Lori was saying, it's an environmentally sensitive area. It's close to major watershed. I don't think people want to be drinking lithium. It's a really bad idea. So that sort of thing. So.
Yeah. You want to tape it? We'll put it on the next meeting. I have not read any aspect of it. I just got the packet this evening, so.
So, so everyone has the packet.
I do have, I do have one question for Chris. Do we have a size limit of what we allow in this town?
I don't think we have a size limit. I think we, we just, the board approved what they offered. And as Beth was saying, it was to hold the power that was generated from the areas and just hold it and then dump it at night. So store it during the day, dump it at night. Store it at day, dump it at night. So I think that's how they.
And it's in, and it's in the area of the fairly large solar field that we have down at.
No, it's at 68 South Maple, which is the storage facility.
Storage facility, yeah.
So it was just, it was just holding it and dumping it. And that was their plan. So they didn't have to do anything, you know, do anything with it during the day, per se. So.
Well, thank you.
Yep.
Steve, do we have a bylaw?
We don't.
No?
I can't speak on the bylaw. I was looking at zoning by law real quick and I did a search for battery and there are no specifics that I could find at the moment. But I did want to bring up, if you do want to bring town awareness to this for support for your next meeting when you bring this up, consider if you would like to post this on the website or the town Facebook or any other channels, because those outside of our meeting might want to get involved and send their own personal letters of support, if a select board would be willing to encourage that.
Okay, we could at least increase the awareness, for sure.
All right. Anything else, Beth?
Nope, that's it.
All right. Discuss open meeting law complaint response. Ron?
We do have a open meeting law violation or complaint that dated from back in August 7, 2025, from Mr. Chris Keller.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, let's, well, let's read the complaint and then the response. Do you have the complaint?
I can paraphrase the complaint. The complaint is, Mr. Keller is arguing that he made accommodation, from an accommodations request to attend a select board meeting and that a particular accommodation was not, it was not entertained, it was not provided for him. I'll go through the response and we can use that to see if that's an adequate response.
Okay.
Okay, so, Mr. Keller, as you're aware, the Town of Brookfield Select Board is in receipt of an open meeting law complaint.
Sorry, Jacob. In receipt of an open meeting law complaint from you dated August 7, 2025. This complaint was discussed in an open session meeting of the Select Board on September 16, 2025. The Select Board authorized me as town administrator to send a response on its behalf to memorialize the discussions that occurred during the September 16, 2025 meeting. Your complaint alleges the following open meeting law violation. The town denied you requested accommodations to attend a July 8 Select Board meeting. With respects to the, to the alleged failure to provide you with ADA access accommodations to the aforementioned meeting, the town did not receive a valid written ADA access accommodation request from you or any other persons for that particular meeting. As such, no accommodations were provided. As mentioned, on several occasions, the town's accommodation policy does not recognize quote unquote blanket requests for multiple future meetings. Accommodation requests need to be in writing for a particular meeting and must be received at least 48 hours prior to the meeting so that technical details can be addressed. Additionally, while East Brookfield District Court Judge, the Honorable Maura K. McCarthy, has ordered the town to provide accommodations in order to allow you to attend town meetings, she also has recently deemed the town's ADA accommodation policy to be reasonable, practical, and adequate for providing ADA accommodations and as such, should be followed when requesting ADA accommodations. We sincerely hope that this explanation addresses your concerns and we pledge to keep to the high standards of open meeting law transparency that the citizens of Brookfield should expect from its town officials.
All right. Do you need a motion to send that out?
Yes, please.
I'll entertain a motion to accept the complaint as written.
I'll make the motion.
Second it, can I just see the draft for a second?
Sure.
I just, there was part of it in your reading that I'm not sure I understood. Okay, so that was back on August 7, which was before we put the form out there and made it convenient for people to request?
Correct, yes.
All right. I would like to include in here the link for the requests now that we have it and say that going forward, you know, should you need that accommodation, please submit via this link or, you know, via email rather than just say written request, right? And with nothing to help facilitate or accommodate actually doing that?
That's easy enough to do.
I think that would be an appropriate modification to that to help facilitate and encourage the, the public engagement rather than just saying, you didn't, you didn't send the mail, say, hey, in the future, if you need that accommodation, please, please do so via X.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, we set, we set that up and we went through all the effort to do that. Let's at least make sure that the people that need it are, are clearly communicated with that that that's the way to do it.
All right. Anything else? All in favor? What do you want? You want to make a new motion with that?
Let me make them, can I amend the motion to accept it with the, with the edits as indicated from the, including the link to the request line?
So we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. And that's on the amendment, so then we need to vote the main motion.
Okay, fair enough. Do you want to, do you want to make the whole motion over so it's really clear or do you want to just?
Sure, if you want.
Yeah, I think it'd be cleaner.
Okay, so procedurally, we should vote it down then and then I'll, I'll resubmit, so.
Fair enough. All in favor?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, so I make a motion that we accept the response with the edits to include the proper procedure embedded in it for requesting that access consistent with our previously voted policy.
Second.
Sorry for the long motion.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approve Select Board minutes on 7/29/25 and 9/2/25.
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Acknowledge animal control officer reports, June, July, and August. And I want to thank our ACO for being very thorough and I think she's doing a great job and I think we hit the jackpot with her. I think so. Acknowledge fire department reports for August of 25. And I actually didn't look at that. I want to think about it. So I want to see if there's any any dates coming up here or any.
Any what? Like anniversaries?
Didn't know if he put anything in there that we wanted to acknowledge.
We've got paramedic Ashley Marks, 13 years.
Yep, oh, wow.
And it looks like we're on pace to have a record year for calls overall. So we're looking, pacing about 100 calls above 2024. And then there's a bunch of, from the August report, there's also a number of other anniversaries. We've got Captain Jeffrey White for 21 years, firefighter Sean Daniels for five years, and Noah Auburn for two years, and we have a new member, Owen Aubin. So it's awesome.
So, yeah, thank you to the fire department, for sure. And the one thing that I, that I missed at the last meeting, and I want to bring it up now, that Chief Blanchard and an officer from East Brookfield, and I don't know the name, did a great job down at White's Landing. And I think you alluded to it at one, but I, I just recently heard the story that if it weren't for Chief Blanchard, that woman would not have lived. So I, in all fairness to our police chief, I wanted to make that note. So I, I just literally heard that story the other day. So, so thank you to Mike Blanchard.
And really quick, I just want to thank the fire department. They gave my daughter and I a tour of the fire station last Monday night after they were training. So I just want to thank them. Yeah, for taking the time. They let her sit in the fire truck, gave her some candy, of course, so.
That's awesome.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Excuse me, I am 18.
I'm sorry?
I am 18. I'd like to ask something.
You can ask. I'll, I'll hear what you have to say.
Well, I didn't, I didn't contact anybody in advance, so this is no advance notice. I would like to, I'd like to, I'd like to be placed on the agenda for next election meeting.
I think we might be in violation of an open, this is 48 hours in advance by the chair, right? So if you want to be placed on the agenda, you're welcome to see any one of us three after the meeting adjourns and you'll be put on the agenda.
Why can't I just ask now?
Let me get a clarification on that, Ron. Are we, we're skirting?
Not, not tonight's agenda.
No, I, I understand.
I think the cleanest way to do it is, as Rich had suggested, probably approach myself or Rich or Sarah.
Well, I have heard from a few people that some of the, they've asked for be on the agenda before and their answer was no.
We're setting to go down a bad path here. If you ask any one of the three or the town administrator after the meeting, you will be put on the agenda.
Okay.
And sorry, but it's the procedure.
Well, I disagree, but that's okay.
It's certainly the cleanest way to do it.
Okay.
I mean, we accomplish the same thing without even approaching that slippery slope. Whereas you, you get to be on the agenda to discuss whatever topic you want to discuss.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.